All right. We are three minutes tardy, everyone. Good evening. This is a special meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and it's not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. And upon request to the superintendent, the district shall make reasonable accommodation for a person with disabilities to be able to participate in this meeting. Hope will you please call the board?
Mr. Haldrey?
Here.
Mr. Arnold?
Here.
Bruterly?
Here.
Mr. Cola?
Here.
Angus?
Here.
Ryan?
Here.
Vera?
Here.
Ms. Benato?
Here.
Mr. Brand?
Here.
Okay, we have an agenda. Can someone make a motion? I'll move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, it is time for our first, or time for public participation. Please note that for efficiency policy twenty-five oh four for public participation has been suspended for this meeting, and there will only be one opportunity for public participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Okay, seeing no one, we will move on to discussion. And tonight, we are here to discuss the selection of our second round candidates. And before I hand it over to John, I just want to express the board's gratitude to all of the candidates who interviewed. I feel very lucky that we had qualified staff in our district who was interested in working with the board and leading our district. I spoke to a board president in another district who was just amazed that we had such qualified internal candidates. And I think it really does speak to the leadership we've had in the district that we've been able to grow great educators who are interested in taking leadership roles. So I just wanted to express on behalf of the board just a lot of gratitude. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to John to help frame our discussion.
So still that that is difficult when you have multiple leaders in your district who are highly regarded. And you see all of them as being qualified and capable, but you can't pick three people to be an assistant. Right, you can't. You've got to ultimately get this down to one. What we're talking about tonight is narrowing down three. The exact number that you're going to narrow down to is yet to be determined, but it's a step in the process of ultimately getting down to one. So while it's difficult, that means that for some of these highly regarded strong leaders that you have, I'll be calling all three of the candidates at the end of the meeting to let them know about the outcome. And so it could be a difficult conversation, you know, in a case or two, but so be it, it has to be it. But also, they all understand, they didn't understood it when they got into this. And I will say this, and I'm happy to say to Paul, I've said this privately. I've been so impressed with how legally they have all approached this. They've been very open with one another about their interest and intent to apply. They, their communication with one another has been all positive in regard to this. Super, super impressive. So I'm confident that even though they're not all the great heroes ultimately want to, they'll handle it like the questions. So given that, as we talked about last time, I'll just briefly reiterate and then pause and give you a chance to ask any last minute question that you might have. But each individually have the chance to say, here's why I'd like to advance the process to whatever extent you're comfortable doing. So you can speak to your why, again, staying in the lane of here's why I affirmatively see this candidate as being potentially our next superintendent, steering away from being critical in any way, shape, or form, or making comparisons to between candidates that may lead to somebody feeling somewhat criticized, right? So and then we'll add it all up and we'll see where consensus lies and take a motion and watch you go through this and say. So relatively straightforward. Do you have any questions about what we jumped from?
I do. Will the motion be after everybody has spoken, then we will move? And will we have a chance to change our, you know?
Yes, because you're actually not voting. What you're doing is you're just expressing your, your individual thoughts.
Right.
Part of the benefit of everybody expressing the why to some extent is that might help you then when it gets to that point. It was actually a motion and you're in a position to decide if you support that motion.
Okay.
Any other questions for John? Okay. Well, how do you, how do you suggest we do this? Do you want us just to each go in order? And if there looks like there's a consensus, or should we all speak, no matter what? Yeah, I agree.
In some terms of transparency, I think it's a healthy approach to that. So people that are here or are seated recording stand, raise stand. In terms of the order, President Bruterly and I talked about that. And you could either go on a volunteer basis, you could start at one part of the table or go directly around. It's totally, I'll consider the president.
Um, I think I'll start by asking if anyone wants to volunteer to go first. If we don't, I can take the hit, but if anyone wishes to speak, okay, go ahead, Mike.
Okay. Well, I want to thank all three applicants, of course, for applying for this position, this ultra important position here in Dexter. All three are impressive, like you said, John. All three have unique characteristics that make them suitable to do this job. I'd like to just speak on Ryan's behalf at first, and just want to express some things that I jotted down here. I expressed, you know, I wrote down that he lives, you know, I looked up everybody's address, probably people did see how far they were away. I know that's a trivial thing, but it still means something with travel time from home to here, something I consider. So he's eleven, eleven or twelve minutes away from, from this building. Of course, he grew up in Dexter, big, big plus for me, Dexter grad, Dexter through and through. When you think about Dexter schools, Mr. Bruder comes, comes to the forefront with that homegrown talent. He also has central office experience, being a director of instruction, has done a phenomenal job for us in that aspect. He's got principal experience, he's got classroom experience. What I found not surprising in his interview, how humble he was. He was often thanking others for his past accomplishments, to be quite frank with you. He shares a leadership approach that I think many will admire. He takes stockholders' value at heart, very articulate. He gave examples, almost every response he gave a personalized example of how that fit into his mindset. Implemented the multi-tier support system here at Dexter and helped bring that forward. That's valuable moving forward. What else I got here? Well, worst in grant writing, that's going to be huge. Obviously, the district always needs funds. He knows how those funding streams work and, you know, teach that to other people as well. He understands the use of technology and AI, leading that initiative with Dee here, our in-house AI platform. Of course, he comes highly recommended and endorsed by Regis Halla, our CFO, Mr. Biki endorsed them, the executive director for Future Council, Future of Learning Council, executive director and militia, the past, his past predecessor.
I don't want to interrupt.
Sure.
Point of order, are we allowed to indicate what was in the, the information shared by the candidates with us?
Technically, yes, you can.
Okay. But I didn't want to hijack.
Sure, that's fine.
The but, the but is that kind of goes down the path of airing one to the other in terms of the application of yours. I'd be a little bit cautious about this, so it's not sure wrong to do so, but I guess I'd be cautious.
Okay, okay.
Sorry.
So for all those reasons, I would feel comfortable with.
Sorry, the, this is the community.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. Oh, do you want us to use the microphone?
Yeah, here, I can't make out every single word.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you for letting us in.
Sorry, this is.
Now you go.
There we go. Can you hear that now? All right, sorry to, to, you know, I'm sorry if you missed some of that, but for all those reasons I explained. And please, you know, know that there's a lot here. I'd like to recommend that we move for him to, you know, move on to the next round. So that's my thoughts anyway.
Charles, it's up to you.
Okay, you're ready. Thank you. So for the second round, I would like to see more of Ryan. I was impressed with this thoroughness, his experience and what was expressed in his interview. I like that he's very connected in the community, kids here, Brad here, staff here. I think that's really good. I also like that he's a systems thinker and provide, can provide a different tempo that our school may need at this juncture. And I, I love to soccer goalie analogy. I thought that that was really thoughtful and I really appreciated it. And so that, that's one of the things that I was left with. I'd also like to hear more from Melanie. I was impressed by her responses and her preparedness. I loved her very experience that she was able to convey to us. She's also very connected to the community, and I think that that's really important. And I really was impressed with her ownership of the homecoming snafu that was very well articulated, and she owned it. And the fact that she owned it, learned from it, and grew from it, I, that was very impressive. That's hard to do, and for those reasons, I'd love to see and hear from both of them.
Okay. Let me say a little bit about all three. I found Barb to be concise. She's got a lot of special education experience, which is really vital to the district. It's an extremely important position, and it's a very difficult position. I really appreciate her work and her contribution to the district. And I also really appreciated her experience in, in DC and her advocacy nationwide, which I thought was great. Melanie, I found very, also very concise, direct. I liked that she took notes while we were talking with her, and so she was able to, I thought, clearly answer our questions, which was great. She's got K-12 experience. She was the only person that spoke to phones as a challenge to learning, which I found really helpful because I know that, as my husband is actually going to a board meeting tonight where they're going to talk about banning cell phones. And, and it's a huge problem for high school teachers and for students. So I thought that was really great. She did take ownership of the communication errors, which I thought was great. She presented a nine-to-day transition plan, speaking to recommendations that, that might differ enough. I wasn't going to say this, but I did confirm that she also has recommendations from senior leadership within the organization, within our organization. So I don't know if that's a factor for anybody. She's very passionate about the community. She also brings fresh eyes and experience, and she's got a lot of other district experience, which I thought is, is helpful. And she was clear that we have work to do, which I think is, is fair to say. So I thought that that was really good. I would like to advance Melanie. Brian, he's got experience at the executive level, and he's got lots of grant writing experience, which you both have spoken to. He's very passionate about our community, he's positive, he believes in integrity. I love that he wants to know everybody's names, all the other kids' names, that he does know their names. And he's got a lot of curriculum experience, clearly loves children, which is great. He has involvement with the bond, so he's got a lot of positives as well, and I'd like to advance Ryan as well.
My, I'd like to pick all three of you that are here or participated, so great to participate and also like to leave all, you know, during the whole process. Because at the end, hopefully all three will still work together in some form or fashion, and wishing all success. The, I thought it was very interesting, a lot of different, you know, like a fair amount of different aspects. I read all the transition plans, which is part of my consideration into my thought. Often did I point, point system like question, and I personally hid previous persons I couldn't steal. So I wanted to kind of do a lot, right? And so that's, that's a big part of my, my, I should, yes, the, I wanted to make sure I looked at them, not just from their current role, but from their roles and, and depth, because a lot of people get put in great positions, but that, that's all we think about. There's a kernel, forget, and they all three have great experience across Portland. Want to make sure we're all three bottom of those across Portland. So for me, I, I'd like to, in no particular order, but I would like to separate off from Mark or Leonard. Well, for the reason she has the strongest, not all tough, by far, especially eighty-five percent of those associations, the union members and, you know, not going to specifics, but she was endorsed by any person there, at least one. And I think budget is going to be key going down these next couple of years, it's going to be part of it. She's also built programs, people don't understand it because she's the, she has that crappy position being head of HR, which if everyone's worked with HR, you know, you're always at the pinnacle of disagreements. No matter what you do, people aren't going to, aren't going to like what you have to say. Is there that, either they agree or disagree, but then there's always two parties in jury. So I think that what we love called toughness, where mental steadfastness and make sure we adhere to policies and procedures that are written will, will be, will be, will be a good asset. And she also started a lot of the back end of programs, special education program, the alternative education program, and early middle college program. She was definitely a key transitional that while only one was just in HR. So and I do like her transition plan. I liked most of them, I said, well, I liked hers and the other person will talk to like her two transition plans. She was concise in her, in her speakers, she was stupid longest, obviously. Not sure what's a plus or a negative. That's why I, the other person I would like to advance is, is Ryan, I'd tell you from him. He's definitely more of a communicative, like a person to approachable, to hold well. You know, plus that he is a Dexter, you know, person, you know, call Dexter name, or Dexter woman, or Dexter person, but that is helpful. He also knew systems called hide, and I like his transition plan. So I think I'm worried about, a little bit about budgets, but I know he had to, to write, write something, I'm worried too much about it. But that's the biggest thing I think that, I need to know about. Now we're realizing, education, how we're realizing, how much the community will, will be a strong person to meet with community members to solve problems. They're out to work on probably the bigger part of this, trying to stay, stay, stay vocal.
Not sure how much I'm going to say is going to be groundbreaking, as has already been said, but I was actually very pleasantly surprised by the quality of the three candidates. All of them, I thought, brought a lot to the table, a lot of good experience, I think, would be able to make the bond superintendent. That, that said, I understand the exercise, I think we need to narrow it down. So I have two that I think that I would recommend for that. The first one is Ryan, really impressed by his curriculum background. He's really taken a lead role with curriculum as part of his current job, but also when he was principal at, at Beacon. He has education, he has teaching experience. I think he's got a very strong administrative background across kind of multiple age groups, leading Bates Beacon. And then here is kind of the bigger, bigger role for, for the district as a whole. That'll be very valuable, I think, in my mind, continuing the curriculum excellence is one of my priorities. So Ryan would be able to keep that going. He's also very experienced with grants. I think school finance in general, but specifically the grant part, I think, staying on top of expenses has been key to us. We've done a great job with that. I want to make sure we keep that going, although that are critical to a lot of our programs. I think he's got a very thoughtful demeanor, I think he would inspire confidence in the community and staff. He's got, as I understand it, good relationships with the staff and the community. We received a lot of feedback from the community, we've all read it all, and they all generally did get a lot of good feedback. Ryan's, I think, stood out to me, that he had a lot of advocates, he had a lot of people that, in dealing with him in multiple different capacities, all had very strong things to say about him, so that stood out to me. And finally, I wrote down, he's very passionate about the district and this position. In some ways, it feels like he's been up to this position. But being a homegrown Dexter graduate, having gone away, schools taught it when we come back, I think, will help with community permissions, we need somebody that is so ingrained in the community. The second one that I would propose coming back is Melanie. She's got a strong, varied teaching background, different ages, different subject matters, to kind of cover the whole gamut, from younger to older, and multiple different subjects. Built out academic programs with the previous, at the previous stops before Dexter. Some stuff she's done has been very interesting, shows that she can lead big picture, large projects. Everything from building a new school, that's got a whole new schedules, building curriculum, funding. That was very impressive, I think they would lend itself well, that skill set. Exposure doing administrative stuff in multiple districts, I think is a plus. So she's got perspectives outside of Dexter as well. That said, she also has, what, ten ties here now at Dexter, like she said, she's got multiple kids that have done in the district. I also see her a lot in community, she's at everything I go to. I feel bad, felt like I go to a lot of things. You go to a lot, but none of us have ever been to anything that Melanie has not been at. So that has stood out to me. And then, yeah, she's, she was very well prepared, I thought, for the interview, all the questions. It seemed like she knew the questions were coming and had a good response to them. So I was, I was impressed by that, and somebody had mentioned her response to the homecoming thing, and somebody who had a high school student at the time. I heard nothing but stuff about the homecoming thing. So I do like how she handled that, explained what the background was, kind of owned up to some failures. I don't think ultimately what anyone did was wrong. It was probably just communication, which ninety-nine percent of this job is communication. And I feel that both of these candidates would do a great job, communication, so, so that's my question.
When I consider the interviews, the references that the three candidates had, Ryan, Bruder, Melanie, Nowak, and Barb Leonard, looking at the feedback from the audience and the materials that they submitted to us, my vote would be to move each of them forward to the next round. I have other information that I would like to know, I would like to hear from them before I make a final decision. So my vote would be to move Ryan Boulder, Melanie Nowak, and Barb Leonard onto the next round of interviews.
Okay. I am first going, a lot of you have highlighted things that I have also noted about the candidates. I think in reviewing all of their application materials, the notes we took during their interviews, the information they provided to us at the end of the interviews, I was just really struck by sort of how much everyone was committed to Dexter, how much their passion for teaching came through, and I was just very impressed overall. As, as Brian mentioned, I understand that the goal here is to get to a single superintendent. And so with that in mind, I'd like to first speak to moving Ryan forward. And I just want to note that I really appreciated the soccer analogy and the leadership style. As a soccer family, I very much understood the, all of the stories he was telling about it. And I think for me, one of the most interesting parts of that was at the very end, when he talked about when you win, it's a team win, and when you lose, it's because the goalie lets something in. And I just felt like that was a really notable marker of who he was, that he sort of understood that piece, especially because the superintendent really is the, the final, I don't know, end decision maker here. I just want to note, I thought, the identity, the long-term priorities that he identified for the district, the bond, the academics, and the retention and recruitment of staff, I thought was really spot on for me. And then I, I, I know other people thought differently about this, but I actually thought he really was very specific in his budget knowledge and provided numbers and provided grants specifically. And so I was impressed, I think as a board member, I am impressed at how difficult the school budget is. And so when people aren't doing it all the time, as none of our candidates are, I thought it was helpful for me to see what they currently already saw about it. So those were, those were things that jumped out for me. I would also like to hear more from Melanie. I, again, wanted to note her long-term priorities, and as Jennifer already mentioned, I think the impact of technology, and she spoke to a number of different technology trends that were going to impact education. I thought that was important, and she also spoke to retention and recruiting of staff. I also noted the homecoming example. And for me, it was honestly what jumped out at me, it was less about the taking responsibility for it and more just the confidence of looking at the seven of us and saying that she could have done it better. I think in many interviews, I think you're taught to, you know, turn it back around and share the positives. And so I think being able to see her just show some confidence there, I thought was notable. And I liked her just overall engagement in statewide programming, like the Future Leadership Council. So I thought it was notable that she was speaking to, or enjoyment of that. So I guess those would be the two that I would want to hear more from. Should we have the students? Would you guys like to speak to anyone?
Sure.
There's definitely some bias for me because admittedly, I didn't really know this planner very well. But I've known Mr. Bruder, and obviously I know Mrs. Nowak for a very long time. The main thing I picked up with Mr. Bruder, can I call him Ryan? The main thing I picked up with Ryan is he just seems so experienced and so, so I think, like Mr. Spohler. Like, talk about how humble he was, how confident he was. He seemed so, so approachable and like that soccer analogy, it's like, we win as a team, we lose as a goalie. That really did stick with me. For Mrs. Nowak, I mean, to be honest, a lot of students were like, like, oh, candidate for the candidate for the superintendent search. And to me, it was like an absolute shock of just like, wow, that is, you answered that perfectly. That's what I wanted to hear about. Maybe I missed it in my notes and just listening in general, I didn't notice a lot of bonds talk from Mrs. Nowak, which did worry me a little bit, especially it's, at least in my eyes, that's the biggest thing we have going on, especially for the high school with all the iron bread. Stuff like that. So if I had picked two to advance, it would be Ryan and Melanie, I guess. Your whole, my notes.
Thank you. I'm not going to put you on the spot.
Thank you.
Okay, is it now that we've all had a chance to speak, would anyone like to speak again? Offer any clarifications, things you've thought of while others have been speaking? I just want to make sure everyone really feels like they have a chance to.
No, I can speak again. Yeah, it wasn't a point shirt format going forward, it wouldn't have started being the first Thursday evening. I would also like to hear more from Melanie Nowak. I really was impressed with her. I've had experience with her at the high school, of course, with, with two high schoolers now. And she, she shocked me, to be honest, of all she did, how authentic she came off. She was very, like, open with her mistakes, like we said, like, like everybody has said with their homecoming stuff. And it was only up to some, some things that, that people, so that, that speaks volumes to me. I liked her, her mindset of a player's kind, I thought that was very powerful. So I think that's a, that's a good quality to have. I like that she's, has.
Um, I like that she's uh, has some unique contract leadership skills there, um. She's also used things from a district-wide lens, I think that's really important, obviously, for a superintendent, and um. She values data, but she doesn't lose sight of people, so I think that's really important as we look at, you know. I'm just thinking about the question I asked about standardized testing. And how that, you know, it's a piece of puzzle, but not the whole puzzle. Um, so I thought that's very uh, thoughtful, I would like to hear from Ms. Nowak.
Well, based on that, I'll move to the Board of Education and invite um, Ryan Bruder and Melanie Nowak to return for a second round. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Two most nominations.
Yeah, I guess I, I'm gonna look to our consultant and just have you confirm for me that. That your totals added up and that those two candidates received the most for us. With that information, then, um, I would like to do a roll call vote on this. Thank you very much. I think this is one of the challenges of working with internal candidates, is that we know and love all these candidates. And it is very difficult to make these decisions, you won't see me on any shows. Um, okay. So with that done, we have uh, one more topic to work through tonight, and that is. Um, I'm gonna turn this back over to John to help us think about the next step, so that we can complete our task to prepare for Monday.
So Mondays, six o'clock. Scheduled to resume interviews now, with two candidates selected to advance, so. And those competing up to eighty minutes each. Be less than the candidacy made, like before. Well, a ten-minute break in between as well. What we need to do at this point is tonight. As we discussed previously, to select the presentation topic for the two candidates. And then we'll do that first, but then we'll talk a little bit about how we're. So. Presentation. I assume you gave a little bit of thought to it, as I mentioned yesterday, appropriate things. Ideas out, let everybody kind of share what they are thinking, and then see where there may be some consensus.
They're all. What I was thinking.
Let's try and speak really loud, so they're not passing us constantly, begging people, but.
Um, my thought was, we have a unique experience or. Unique situation where we have overlap. So what I, I would like to see from the candidates is a presentation on their transition plan, but in particular, how they're gonna. Knowledge shared with Dr. Timmons, and how they're gonna utilize him, but what their plan would be as superintendent. In the first, in the first year.
You read my mind, I just wrote down.
Like that's, that's just kind of like saying, tell us what you're gonna do, but. It's not a narrow topic, but what it feels like, it's the important.
I, I mean, that was exactly my thought too, is having a transition plan presentation. I think that'd be important, not only for us to hear, but for the community to hear and to understand, like, the plan, because. People have to understand, Dr. Timmons is still with us until February when he retires, so there is an appreciable amount of time for us to work through this. And um, like to hear how that would be accomplished, so that, that, that would be my proposal as well, thanks, Brian. Yeah, this is really weird. It is weird, sorry guys. Like a hand bike if we're gonna be passing it around, um. Bane of my existence for five years, microphones, um, I also had a similar uh, thought. I think the candidates provided us a lot of material at the end of their interviews that we have had the chance to read through and see. Um, and the community has not, so I think one of the directions I probably would give to the candidates. Is that I'd like them to speak to the transition plan. In a way that staff and parents. And, and employ- and uh, board members can all sort of understand, but you know, we all, I think, are looking from different. Four different things from our candidates, um, and I'm not sure there are questions in the first round. Maybe hold the best information for parents. Um, and while the superintendent sort of is the guiding hand, I think parents look to them as leader of the district. And so I guess I just want to make sure that parents, board members, and staff all have a sort of understanding of what this could look like, that is my, my thinking.
Oh, yeah. For the transition plan, yeah, I get it. However, I think it's too vague. Because I read all their transition plans, and I think we're gonna kind of hear the same thing, because until they sit down with Dr. Timmons. And with everybody in the staff, the DEA, and all the administrators, we're not gonna be able to really refine it much more. Than what we've seen here, I mean, I think that's, to me, that until you sit down with your subordinates and your other leaders in the district. You can't really get a detailed transition plan, you're not gonna get any input in three days or a couple days, that's just my gut feeling, so. I like that you have a transition, transition plan, I would like to have it focused on two to three areas, or they can key in. Uh, for us to hear, one. Game, budget, and bond, and I would say that I might key on it with a, what do you do during a short, how are you gonna maintain? Um, strategies with a short budget, basically, and lack of funds, that's what's coming down, maybe coming down with pipe, hopefully doesn't. That would be the one key here, the other key I would like to hear more about, and I include the bonds too, I see a slide all on there, and then the other key I'd like to hear about is. Basically, student-based learning. Across all the entire spectrum, not just college kids, but also uh, kids that maybe don't want to go to college, right? Uh, so, might be too broad, I know, but, but, but we have, I think we just say, give us your transition plan. We're just gonna see the same thing, by show that to community members, it says nice slide deck, um, doesn't say much. I mean, they're, they all kind of say the same thing, but, so I wanna, you could, you could pick a different topic in there. I like that at least some focus in that transition plan, and it's gonna change, I get that, but talk to their, to their, to the community, to. To the staff and the administration, that kind of stuff, but without a little focus, I think we're just gonna see all kinds of the same thing. Gonna talk to everybody, get their input, gonna go there, understand the budget. That's just my, so, transition plan, but we can change, but I mentioned as focus points, but some, one or two. I'm sorry.
No, 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 once you, once you, like I, yeah.
My, my thought was, yeah, most of them gave us a transition plan, and that's effectively what it was, but that's kind of my point. Is they've already got the materials, superintendent, one of the most critical things for them to be able to do is communicate well and succinctly. So I want them to communicate this to us in the community in a way that's digestible and succinct, they've got twenty minutes. We come to the board meetings, one of the things that I look at and I struggle with sometimes is longer presentations, they're just too long, I get. I get drilled from my board at my work about every presentation has to be like succinct, quick, but effective. And I think that skill is very important for the superintendent, so I'm less concerned about. The substance of whatever they can put together in four days. Um, than with how do they deliver the materials that they've been thinking about, so that, that's my thought of why I would like them to focus on. Generic transition plan and not substantively do homework down an area, maybe they're not fully refined on. Yet, because they're gonna learn on the job, some of the substantive things, but if we want to. Pick an area of a transition plan to focus on, maybe. But at that point, you're not talking about a transition plan, you're talking about a subject.
Well, I'm talking, when I say that, I'm not talking about for you to know the numbers of the budget, right? But you should have some idea of how you're gonna manage a couple of key areas, or how you work, how you want to, should I be interested, that's what I'm talking about. I'm not saying you have to know the budget, because the budget's hard, you got a hundred, just look at the.
So that's not a transition plan, you're talking about having substantively addressed their.
No, one, the budget. Focus on.
Education.
Focus on education, curriculum. And funding, don't you?
Twenty minutes or less?
Just say focus on.
Pull in some other ideas.
Well, I've had a chance to look at all the. I don't have to go close after you, but um, I did have a chance to review the, the three transition plans, and yeah. I kind of agree with, with um, with Ryan, um, I think. It's, it's a, a little bit vague, but I think we need to do, we need to see what they're gonna um, do after the transition as well. Um, I think we're all, I mean, Dexter's a great district, and we want to continue moving forward. But what does that mean in their eyes, what is Dexter to them, what is Dexter's uh, goal after the transition? Like where are we going, what are we emphasizing, um, how will we um, bring technology to all the bond? Um, that's a huge part, like, like you know. Like Dan said, to, to be able to manage that money, and the general fund money, um, is it, is a huge undertaking, so. To have so a little bit more detail than what's just in this transition plan, I think would be very helpful. So something in the transition plan to put a little more focus, that's what I would see.
And I'd just like to proffer a little bit too, like, we see this.
Yeah.
Nobody else in the room has seen this, so. In, I mean, even if we think like, oh, I got it, that doesn't mean the community shouldn't want to hear, so that's why I'm supportive of it. I think, I think it would just be very helpful for people to feel more comfortable with that, and an explanation, so, sorry, I jumped in again, go ahead, Jennifer. Has a path forward, we should all take, we should not have to take.
You might have made a check, yeah, at least I would say to that, is. What I would really press you on a bit is, this is an opportunity again. To learn something from the candidates that is gonna inform your final decision, so. Whereas, I, I, so I, I respect the fact that you're interested in making sure that you're being transparent with your community. But in reality, this is about the seven of you being in the best position you possibly could be in to make this gigantic decision. So I think it's more about what have we learned from this twenty-minute presentation that's gonna help inform our decision. Versus, we get it, but perhaps our, our stakeholders don't, so let's do this for their benefit, again, I appreciate that, but. That's not the most important part of this.
That's good.
That's a good point, thanks for, thanks for the clarification. I tend to agree with Dan in terms of wanting to have more information, I thought that the. The budget question and, and understanding and managing uh. The budget and the bond is very important for our district. And uh, I'm not sure exactly how to phrase the question, but I really think that that's an important. Point that needs to be, to be explored, uh, even if they don't really know how to do it, how will they? Use the resources that they have uh, to do that? My biggest question, honestly, and this is a question, and I don't know if it's a presentation, but is. Like, why do they really want to do this job, it's a really hard job, it's a really hard job, and, and it is. They have good jobs now. And do they, that's, I, I don't know how to ask that question either, but that's the biggest question, like the commitment to the job, understanding that. How much work it takes, how many hours it takes, all of the communication with the board, community, all of the word. It's not easy, and so just making sure that they understand that, and hearing that, that they understand that, um, is important to me.
I don't have another idea other than what's already been suggested, but I feel like. What has been suggested, and I'm not trying to be negative here, can be addressed in questions like during the other part of the interview. And I would, I want to see a presentation where. I see their character, where I see who's leading our district, who's making the best decisions for our students. And it's something that shows me that you're in this long term, why you want to do this, it is a very hard job. And you are going to take criticism from a lot of people and have to make these tough decisions, and you have to live with them. But you also have a community to answer to, so I, I don't have a topic, I apologize, but I want to see something in twenty minutes that they can present on and talk about. Um, that shows their character to me, that is someone that can lead this district and, and keep us on the path that we're on. I don't feel like that's a presentation about the transition, I sadly, I don't, because that's in these documents and.
More like their vision, you have the district or something.
Yeah, like where, what are you gonna be doing in three years, are you gonna be back at this table and talk for NASA? Or could we be, you know, looking like at, at, at you leaving, and, and it's too hard, and, and not that like failure, but. Something that speaks to um, their character and longevity, and I don't know what that topic is, I mean, I've had some things. Kind of in the back of my mind, but.
But that can be the topic, right, your vision for the district in one year, three years, where will we be, and they can weave in. Whatever they want, the bond, if they're more comfortable with talking about the curriculum side. If they're more talking, comfortable talking about the wheel we got on the wall, whatever it is. My main thing that I would be looking for. Is how do they communicate, what level of confidence do they get the board, the community too, they're. Obviously, I do think that's very important, but the board frankly, like, we need to be comfortable that. This candidate can do the job and communicate to us, so I care less about what the subject matter is. But more whether they have time to adequately prepare. A good presentation to present on Mondays, we're talking not too long from now, and if they're not terribly familiar on one of your most area, I don't want to hold that against one candidate. And the other one might be right in the wheelhouse, so something more like, what is your vision for one-year careers, makes a lot of sense, because then they can focus on what. Whatever aspect of that they want, I don't really care what it is, and it can be different things that they focus on, but to me, it's much more about. Who are they, what is their passion, and how do they communicate?
I appreciate that, I, I guess I'll chime in and say, I agree with Brian, I don't want the candidates. Working to research and put something together, because I agree. Our relationship with this candidate is going to be verbal, it is going to be trust, it is going to be, like, we need to see those elements. That help us know that we're gonna get the information that we need from the candidate in a timely way, communicated well, communicated appropriately. And so I, I agree that whatever topic we pick, it is more about how they have the discussion with us. So I, I don't mind the, the vision statement, because also, both of the candidates were moving forward, I know. Are on the future of leadership, like they clearly thought about what education in the future looks like. Um, and so having them talk to us about what it could be here, and. I, like honestly, I don't even care if it's real, I just want to know, like, what do you imagine this could be personally? Um, so I'm not gonna hold them to do it, like, this doesn't even have to be for me, or uh, here's where I'm going, it just has to be. How does this person think widely, and what are they not afraid to tell us, and just, you know, have fun with it, like. A little bit, I guess I want to see some joy about education, like. I don't know, I think our meetings are like not bad here, we have fun with it, right, so like I want a candidate who is going to participate.
They give a lot of presentations to us, it's.
Yeah.
Week, we get a presentation longer than twenty minutes, so like, this is a trial run to what that's gonna be like frankly, for us. And what we're gonna sit through for the next many years, so.
Yeah, that's a good point, I, I didn't hear that as, as much in the, in the. So, so one of the comments was, we want to hear, I think it was, uh, Ali said, you know, for the board, the community and the parents. Um, but, um, I do want to know as a board how we will be kept informed. And how that, how they envision that communication to go, um, because it's really important, and it's such a good job of that, so I think. Maybe the, maybe that's part of your vision, I don't know, um, but. I love the vision plan.
Yeah, I like, yeah, yeah, I like it more than the transition plan, yeah, I guess I want to see something, like, like feel something different. And just the fact that, how many presentations has Dr. Timmons done this year? Bonds, right, at least about twenty of those, and we had the, what does your school look like in the future, right, you even did a couple of those. People show up, but. It's still we're doing them, and they are important dudes, people can at least look on the website, everything, and see what's, you know, what is the vision of the school, and deal with. Year and a half of, uh, the, so.
I like that this gives it a personal touch, Tim.
Yeah, it's super priorities, I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I would move to the Board of Education, request the candidates to prepare a presentation on their vision. Of the dis- of Dexter Community Schools for the second round of interviews.
Dream twenty-three.
What did you call it, Dan?
Dream twenty-three.
That's graduation, right? That's called, and I, as a graduation.
No, you picked, you picked a perfect year. I don't think we actually have to vote on this if we don't want to. And if we want to, we can vote.
Okay, make sure we.
Do we need to, or do we need to have a motion?
Formerly, uh, Dick actually had it now, as long as it becomes census, that's okay.
Well, I think we still want to make sure we're all.
Covering.
Yeah, well, that's true. So, do we like that?
Yes, I say yes.
Amy's, Amy's no idea.
Amy's no idea. We can't be idea. I'm just having.
Are we giving, are we giving a timeframe for this vision? No, as far as like how, one year, three year.
I, I frankly, let them figure it aside. I mean, if they wanna think about it differently, that's fine.
They should tell us the twenty years that they want to be in that job.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have to tell us.
If flying cars and robot teachers are part of it, that'd be frankly, kind of cool.
Honestly, yeah, I, I would love to give people latitude to be as free, interesting, and open as they want to be.
Personally, did that provide you enough to convey to the candidates?
Uh, no. When I, I, I was gonna interrupt, it's okay. I, I, it's, it's a good start. But I feel like, um, I need a little bit more help with that, it took, uh, clarity to that. So are you wanting to get more to what types of things will they have accomplished over the course of years? What's their vision there? Is it more a vision about how they, um, are able to bring people together, right, around a vision, a shared vision, move the district forward in a way that, that it spills competence, um, and inspires the entire school and community? And I guess I'd wanna be a little bit more explicit in terms of what we're asking to.
Could be. I mean, I like the fact that they can take it in whatever direction they want, to be honest.
And I'd say that ultimately, it's up to you.
Well, right. I mean, the bond has been approved and coming, so it's not, you know, that's something that they're going to have to manage. So that wouldn't be like a vision of the new sports complex or the new
Right.
auditorium for, um, arts performing, but, but what are you going to do when the transition happens? Like, what is your vision for the school? When you successfully are offered this job and you transition with Dr. Timmons and start to communicate with us? What, what is your vision?
I mean, it could be as, as you want it to be, as broad as what is your vision for, for Dexter schools over the course of the next several years?
Ten years? The next.
Uh, you can, you can give it a number or, or leave it somewhat vague. I know Brian, you said maybe don't even give a number at all, but so I'm, I, it's more of a question than anything.
Five years?
I don't care, but we, that's more, when we do the helm, we don't do five years, right?
Like seven. Seven is a little longer.
Seven, eight, or something like that. I mean, it will need to be renewed.
Maybe we can gear up about that.
Likely in the next.
You don't want to turn it to a plan. Most, most companies, at least the military, government, we do five-year plans, right?
Mm-hmm.
You know, we constantly redo five years. Uh, so five years always can benchmark, I guess. But, you know, again, if you put in a notice, we're not gonna be able to come up to, because once they do the transition, then there's one, and then we hold them, why do we have to do this again? You know, but, yeah, to us to say, hey.
Plan will change when we figure out how much money we have, frankly.
How much money, talk about administrators, different deals.
And the board sets goals, and the district has stateful, I mean, there's a lot of feedback that goes into an actual plan. What it sounds to me like is we are looking for the candidates to communicate to the board their vision of what education could be in Dexter. And I don't, I, I, I guess if people need a timeframe, I would say three to five years. But I think the I, I think the salient points seem to be what would you hope to see? What would you hope to work on? If you could wave your wand and say, we're gonna do what I want to do, I guess.
They don't have to stick to the helm and the boxes we have.
I mean, I, I think, you know, we want them to communicate with us. And so it doesn't have to be what's going to happen. It just needs to be.
Your, your.
Thought.
Okay.
Might be true.
Because you guys gone through a lot, four, four to five years. Mostly based on political stuff, right? That's just down to the community. So what's your vision to bring the Dexter community on board with, kind of with a vision for the school district? It's not an easy one, uh, but it's.
Dan's wanting to work.
I know.
Twenty-four seven.
The next word, I guess, no. Well, okay. But if you want to get more specific, that's kind of something I'm getting into.
Did, did Elise provide you a little bit? Because what she said was
Pretty broad.
Bro, broad. I, I think that's kind of what we're looking for is, is to allow them to work in those parameters, but without being like, talk about the, you know, the battle of eighteen twelve, of this and this and this, and what happened with this job. Like, we're, I don't want to be that specific. We want to be more like.
And I mean, the candidates, some of them put things in their plans to us about some of their priorities. So they could take those priorities and just expand them and, and talk about the.
It's, it's something along the lines of what is your vision for what Dexter schools will accomplish and under your leadership over the course of the next three to five years?
That sounds good. Yeah.
Perfect.
But, but I guess I would also, just with the caveat, they don't have to hit every area. If they want to tell us like about two things, that's fine. We just want to hear the type of thinking they're doing and the type of the story they can tell.
Presentations. This is not a, yeah, a plan, right?
Yeah, it's not a plan. I guess that would be a communicating point. Right.
Right.
It's large, but it's more a vision. If I'm your next superintendent, and I look ahead, right, long-term vision, what do I expect we're all gonna see and accomplish together?
That's great.
Okay.
Thanks, Simon.
Okay, I will, uh, like, I think that that's that I need, I'll be able to find to that.
Thank you. And then you want us to email you our two questions and.
To release dates. And then again, just to reiterate there, um, I had given you in the folder that you got at the beginning.
Yeah.
Remember that you've got quite a large bank of interview questions there that were designed to be available for seconds. I know you got plenty of questions from the first round that you had too. But again, you don't even have to be limited to those. Um, you could look at your candidate profile, for example, and a question you may have is, is there anything here that we're not clear enough about, that we haven't heard enough about yet? That would be helpful to, and how to write fashion a question around that. And if you have forms, somebody may have suggested a great question that you just want to go ahead and nab at him and leave. Um, it could be something very specific to Dexter schools that, of course, you're not gonna find any that I provided. And just to reiterate too, if it's something, if there would be a different question, something that you need to hear more from Melanie about, but that would be different, something that you need to hear more from Brian about. It could be two separate questions specifically targeted to each of those candidates that would be appropriate to. So I would say minimum with three, but three to five, you could overshoot the mark. There's sure to be some duplication, but the goal would be for me to from the group that you provide to Alicia, get those to me, and I'll assign you a couple of the questions from those that we suggested. And we'll go run robin in the next round. So we'll start with the board president, but then just kind of circle around. Usually you ask one question and then we'll come back to you. A chance at the end, again, over the candidates to ask questions if they're both from parks as well. I'll come in with, uh, the interview questions ready for you. So I'll encourage you to bring these vineyards back. And I'll just have them ready for you three whole bunch. You can slide it right in here. Thank you. In terms of getting ready for Monday, this.
When do we have to have the questions released?
Can you do that by Friday? I know this is short notice, but we talked about it before.
Any other questions for John?
Anything else that, if you're not crystal clear on, that we should be talking about.
All right. At this time, I'll move with the Board of Education, move into closed session for the purposes of discussing attorney-client privilege material pursuant to MCL fifteen point two-six eight sub H. So uh, we have a motion and a second, and I'm just gonna suggest we do a five-minute break between, um. Oh, yes, with a five-minute break. Is there any other discussion? Hope can we do a roll call?
Hi.
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 Sarah.
Hi.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for being here, folks.